So why don't we go ahead and call this meeting to order? It is now four oh one P M. Um, in the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two Charlottesville City Council Hybrid Meeting will come to order. Ms. Thomas, would you call the roll, please?
Councilor McGill mentioned that she would possibly be late and she'd be joining us virtually.
Okay.
Councilor Payne?
Here.
Councilor Pinkston?
Here.
Mayor Snook?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Here.
Okay, so four out of five, we have a physical quorum present, so we can still do business with Ms. McGill joining us when she can. Is there a motion to approve or to amend the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Payne, anybody second?
I second the approval of the agenda.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. So as always, this meeting will be divided into three main sections. First is a work session to hear and discuss some presentations. Second, there will be a closed meeting starting roughly five thirty. Uh, and then there will be a city council business meeting, which will begin around six thirty. There will be seating available in the council chambers for up to twenty-three pre-registered attendees. Um, beyond that twenty-three, you have to participate by Zoom. So the first item on the agenda is a report on Jaunt update, and I'd like to invite Ted Reek, the Jaunt Inc. CEO, to present. Mr. Reek, are you with us virtually? There you are. I see your face. Not hearing anything from you, but we see your face. We're not getting anything except some feedback. Anybody got a clue as to what's going on?
Okay, there we go.
Okay, Mr. Reek, you with us?
Ms. Sanders, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Fire away.
I think Mr. Sanders is going to introduce me first.
Yes, um, good evening, council and members of the public. Um, before Ted begins, just wanted to share with council um, that the presentation this evening that Ted will make is actually a little expanded from what was posted. So we just wanted the public to understand that he will get to go into more details uh, than what was provided in the packet that was posted on Friday.
Great.
You can go ahead and take it away.
Now I'm going to share my screen. Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, thank you for having me this evening. Um, I bet, I think I've made everyone accept for Councilor Payne. Uh, John's vision, just as a reminder, our basic goal is to enable people to live their lives independently and with dignity. And we've been doing this for about forty-two years. Uh, there are four Charlottesville appointees to our board. Um, one is Lucas Ames. Uh, he's relatively new to the board. Uh, his term expires in September. Eric Larson is the newest member of our board. Uh, Christine Appert has been on the board since twenty sixteen, and Ray Heron has been on the board since two thousand and one. Uh, as another, again, another friendly reminder, we serve a six-county area, including Charlottesville. And I would say most, if not all of our ser-, most of our services will feed into Charlottesville in one way or another. Including services that we also provide in Charlottesville itself. Uh, we have a wide range of services we provide depending upon needs. Uh, biggest one is our ADA complimentary service. Uh, that's a requirement under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we do this in support of the CAT system. We also provide some of the outline counties, uh, circulator intra-county service. We also provide links from the counties to Charlottesville. And then we also provide commuter services uh, into Charlottesville and UVA. Uh, this is the CAT system. Uh, the biggest thing we do for both, for CAT is to support its services with ADA paratransit services. In general, we cover an area three-fourths of a mile either side of a bus route. So it pretty much encompasses all the city of Charlottesville and a good part of the urbanized area of Albemarle County. Uh, as a quick refresher or primer, uh, we receive three types of funding, federal, state, and local. Uh, our federal money includes money that can only be used in the rural areas. And we also receive urban money, but we receive that through the city of Charlottesville. And these cert-, these funding can't be mixed. You can't use urban and the rural areas and vice versa. And that's a key distinction that I'll, I'll get into a little later. Uh, federal money is reimbursable, so depending on how much we spend, the eligible expenses determines how much money we actually get up to a ceiling. And this is allocated annually, and it's based on various factors that embraces the city as well as the county in terms of calculating how much we get each year. Uh, state funding is based on performance. Uh, unlike the federal money, we can use the state money in urban or rural settings. Uh, it's a fixed amount, uh, in terms of, uh, we're not depending upon a reimbursement. Uh, if we get X number of dollars, we get to spend all of that on eligible expenses. And local money, which is from the jurisdictions such as the city and the county, uh, is also a fixed amount. Uh, again, we can use this in urban and rural settings. We also receive some money through agency contracts, uh, with human service agencies, uh, such as JABA and PACE. And that's based on how much service we actually provide to those entities. Uh, specifically on Charlottesville, the main funding we receive is not only from the city itself, but through federal funding. Uh, the county, uh, the way the federal funding is distributed to the area is based on population and the amount of services that are provided. So Albemarle County actually contributes to the federal funding that the city receives. However, that funding is exclusively controlled by the city and is negotiated between Jaunt and CAT annually. We call this a split letter, and CAT receives seventy-five percent of this amount and Jaunt twenty-five percent. At this point, we can only use it for ADA services, even though the funds can be used for almost any urbanized service, not just ADA. However, um, there are parts of the urbanized area of Albemarle County, which is eligible for federal funding, urban funding, but we cannot use it, and it's kind of creating something I call a transit desert. And I'll explain more about that in a moment. Uh, for the coming fiscal year, our total funding is two point six million dollars. Uh, twenty-two percent is federal, uh, thirteen percent is state, and almost two-thirds is from the city itself. And it covers both operations and capital expenses. On the federal side, we get, uh, three types of federal funding that we use for Charlottesville. One is what we call formula, which is based on population and other factors. Uh, ARP, A R P money, that's part of the COVID relief package. There's still some of that funding left over for FY twenty-three, and there's a little bit of money we receive strictly for rural areas. In terms of ridership, like many systems in this, in the country, uh, we were hit by COVID. And if you look at the graph, uh, in around February, March of twenty twenty, that's when the virus really took off here. And we saw a big reduction in ridership. Uh, we've kind of held our own for the last, uh, two years. We're seeing a slight trend up. In the beginning, COVID kind of limited our services. Uh, now it's more dealing with, uh, drop, bus operator or driver shortages. We're having a tough time standing up, and I can discuss that more later if you'd like. Uh, many of you aware, and I know Councilor, um, Wade is familiar with this, having served on the Jaunt board. A couple of years ago, uh, we ran into some, uh, challenges with the state. Um, we had, uh, our CEO, uh, made some judgment errors in terms of spending money. That triggered an audit, and that discovered some issues that Jaunt wasn't doing very well. Uh, these, uh, findings were contained in what we call a cure letter. And I want to give you a report as to how we're doing. I believe we are making progress in addressing many of the areas addressed by the state. Um, I want to give credit to the staff that was here before me in keeping things going. Um, so a lot of the accomplishments, I credit to them, but we are continuing this momentum uh, since my arrival here six months ago. There are four basic areas that, uh, the letter addressed, is performance data, how we spent rural versus urban money, and also some other issues, including our administrative costs. In summary, uh, we overstated some of our statistics, which allowed us to get more, uh, state funding, federal funding that we were entitled to. Uh, this was an error, um, with the prior CEO basically hoarded the data and did not share that with anybody. And, um, that data, um, was used to report to the state, which gave us more money than we were entitled. After he left and we were able to reconstruct what actually happened during that time, we ended up discovering that we, uh, needed to pay back the state a million dollars, uh, which, uh, we have done, and that was charged off for our FY twenty twenty-one budget. Um, fundamentally, there was really no problem in our record keeping. Uh, right now, what we do is we have an open record system where multiple people look at data and multiple people verify its accuracy. In the past, only one person had the data, and that wasn't the CFO or anybody to track it, and nobody was able to see that information. But now it's, it's open, opened up. Uh, also, we've been tasked with inaccurate cost allocation among urban and rural areas. We have a new cost model that does a better job of allocating those costs, but we are looking at even improving that model today. And relating to urban and rural money, uh, there's a situation where we bought vehicles with rural money, but they're used in urban services. Uh, we're trying to rectify that situation. A lot of the services that we provide are urban, so we need to make sure that the money that we use for vehicles and other capital needs line up with those purposes. Uh, we also had some services that were paid with rural money, but they were in the urbanized area. Uh, we paid back just this year about a hundred thousand dollars to make that even. Going back to our record keeping, uh, we are, uh, doing a better job of tracking and allocating those resources. We've actually discovered more anomalies. We are reviewing those anomalies with the state uh, to verify their accuracy and to see what we do next about, about that. And we've briefed our board, uh, uh, Mr. Sanders has been briefed about this. Members of the ci-, of the Albemarle County have been. So we have, uh, explained where we are on that and some of our solutions, and we're working through the details with the state. The state will be here next week, and we hope to discuss this further with them in person next week. Finally, uh, we're also in the process of developing a new transit plan, which would be a three to five-year look at our, our, our business. Uh, we're updating the agency contracts with JABA and PACE. Also, the state, uh, made a comment that they thought our administration costs were too high relative to our budget. Um, we've investigated that, and we don't see where that's actually the case. Uh, they based their conclusions on a twenty-eleven report, well, twenty-sixteen report from Texas that was based on twenty-eleven data. And they looked at Texas systems, uh, that operates, uh, a wide range of services and compared us to them. To give you a little bit of detail on that, um, most of the systems in Texas don't resemble Jaunt at all. In fact, uh, out of, um, sixty-eight systems, we're thinking two to four systems may even be remotely like Jaunt. Uh, we don't have data about those systems, so we cannot make a comparison as to where we may be different uh, than them to have the state make the conclusions that they did or the observations they made. However, we did our own analysis using more recent data and compared ourselves to Virginia systems. And we think we're pretty much in the meat ballpark with other Virginia systems. However, we will keep looking for ways to be more efficient administratively. You heard me talk about mixing in rural and urban funding. This is an issue. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, we did our own review in addition to what the state did, and we discovered potentially more misapplications than, than they did. We've reported those to all interested parties, and we're going to re-, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to review those with the state hopefully next week. Uh, to give you a perspective, on the left of this chart is, uh, the, the blue area is what we thought was the rural parts of our urban area, and the green part is the urban, what we thought were the urban areas. And we equated the urban areas with our ADA service zones, and anything outside that, we considered rural. That was not correct. Actually, the urbanized area is defined by the census, which is the map on the right. And there are some white areas surrounding the city and encroaching on the blue area, which we call transit deserts. Those are urbanized areas eligible for service, for urbanized funding, but we don't have the funding lining up to do that. And those are services that we provide that benefit both county and city residents. They include, uh, retail as well as, uh, employment opportunities. I'm wrong, I'm discussing right now with Garland how he might address that, and I'm also discussing with Garland, uh, other issues as well, and I, I've been finding Garland very open-minded about these things. Uh, so I just want to let you know that we are working on a solution. Uh, and, and in that vein, I do want to, um, indicate that we're, we are working together. I don't believe Jaunt and CAT have played very well together in the past. Uh, we are turning a new page on that, I believe. Um, not too long ago, the, the city, the county, CAT and Jaunt got together, uh, and had a get-to-know-each-other meeting. Uh, just today, I had a meeting with the other transit operators, with, uh, the school district, with Garland and Becca White at UTS. Uh, one of the areas we're talking about is how do we deal with a shortage of bus operators? We're also talking about working together on developing alternative fuels for our vehicles, getting away from fossil fuels. So to that end, we're piggybacking on a study that CAT has initiated, looking at alternative fuel vehicles. Uh, we are also going to look at our fleet. That, that study was only to look at CAT's fleet. We are putting our money into look at Jaunt's fleet as well. And in addition to looking at those different technologies, we are forming an advisory committee for the Jaunt portion of the study, so that we would have a cross-section of our community tracking along with us to see how we evaluate and make decisions regarding on what our future fuel ought to be and, uh, what our strategy should be on getting to a cleaner environment. And later on, if you have any suggestions and who should populate our committee, I would be open to hearing your suggestions. Going back to the bus shortage issue, that's affecting everybody, not only in this area, but the country as well. Uh, today, we discussed opportunities where we can see CAT bus routes overlapping areas where Albemarle County students live. And many of these people could conceivably take a CAT bus to the high school and other schools as well. Uh, that could s-, if, if that works out, that could save five or six bus operators for the school district. Doesn't sound like much, but it's really huge. That means we're competing for five or six less bus operators, and we're reducing overlap. And we brought this to the attention of both of CAT and, uh, the school district just today. And we're going to be looking into it further, uh, depending upon how the, the school district wants to proceed on that. So we are looking at opportunities to work together, and this is just one example. In addition, uh, it looks like the city may be in line to give what we call micro-transit demonstration, that is through the state. Um, I want to discuss that in a moment. I discussed the transit deserts, which I am having discussions with Garland about the funding on that. And Crescent Hall, the senior center, um, there may be a bigger role for Jaunt to play in serving that particular development. Uh, micro-transit, I'll, I'll be honest with you, the state has the demonstration grant. And at this point, it's been recommended that the city get that. I don't know if that's a done deal or not, but the, the state specifically did not want Jaunt to be, uh, the grantee on that because of all the issues we had. However, um, I think there's a role for Jaunt, and I would like to see if the state would be willing to allow us to be a subcontractor to CAT to operate some of the service. And that's discussion I'm still going to have with Garland and state. This map shows you where we operate, uh, the two, uh, zones, the north zone and the pantop zone. Jaunt already operates in those areas. We have vehicles, we have bus operators. Um, so we could add that to the, to the experiment. Plus, how we do business is not a big stretch from micro-transit. We do on-demand services now. So we'd like to see if, uh, there's any flexibility on the state's part and the city's part, see if Jaunt could be, have a role here. And I totally understand that Jaunt, uh, has not, uh, has had, has some problems. And I totally get all that, but I think it's a great opportunity to turn the page. Also, this particular service delivery method, we would like to use those in the rural areas as well. Uh, the, the transit deserts, uh, we think there's opportunity to use new funding to serve this area. Uh, there's also an opportunity to maybe flex existing funds in here. Uh, again, those are discussions we're trying to have with all the interested parties. Finally, uh, another, there's some future activity. I think many of you, Mayor Snook, I know you're involved in the RTA. Uh, the regional transit authorities, a future opportunity, also, uh, passenger-facing technology. Uh, smartphones are amazing. Uh, there's an application where you can combine the information of all the transit operators in the area in one app. So if you need to take UTS from the Currit Cancer Center to Hollymead, uh, there are apps that'll trace that trip for you and tell you which buses to, to board and where to get them. We hope we can book trips on Jaunt through the app. You can, uh, book your bike sharing if you want to, or if you're so inclined to ride a scooter, you could do that as well. So just today, we discussed among the, the operators to develop a joint project to see if we can de-, uh, obtain an application to provide a seamless centralized point of information. We'd like to see if we could expand commuter options. Uh, UVA has been tied on parking. Uh, they would like people to not drive to campus, to the grounds, I'm sorry. Uh, and maybe we can intercept them where they live and do a better job at that. And there may be opportunities for joint development between transit. Uh, perhaps, uh, there are some areas of the city that could be both a good transit station as well as a location for affordable housing. There may be transit dollars that we can use to leverage some of those kinds of developments. And we'll be looking at those opportunities on a cooperative basis. So I hope I haven't left anyone behind, but that's, um, my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Reek. Um, council questions, comments?
Uh, just had a couple of comments and one minor question. Um, one, it's, um, yes, um, it was a pleasure to serve on our board for, you know, many years as a county rep, as a transportation planner for the county, and did great work, um, and I'm sure you still do. Uh, many of our, the people that we serve, they were the only way to not only get to that doctor's appointment, but to, to church or, um, some type of social event. So I'm glad that Jaunt is still serving that important role in our community. My question was if, if you could just explain a little bit more about what micro-transit is. I know what it means, but if you can give an example of what it might look like, um, when fully implemented.
Well, uh, to use a, a commercial term, it's Uber for transit. You can, um, use the app and book a trip, like, much like you do Uber. Uh, the transit service would be provided in much the same way. It would be on-demand, uh, with a response within a, a period of time. Uh, right now, to use CAT, you got to time yourself out for the bus route and go to a bus stop. Uh, for Jaunt, you got to make an advanced reservation. Uh, with the micro-transit feature to our service, uh, delivery repertoire, you can make more spontaneous trips. And that's how probably people live, is spontaneously in many ways.
Yeah.
So that would be the next leap for us in terms of our transit, uh, development in the region.
Right, and the cost and, uh, um, you know, the timing of it would be compatible with, um, not compatible. Um, we'll be able to compete with the Uber, you know, you know, assume it would, it would be a lot, um, less expensive than a Uber or that type of service.
Well, it'd be subsidized, much like, uh, transit is anyway, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, no, no transit system pays for itself out of the fare box. Um, so, um, so to the user, it might be nominal versus an Uber or Lyft. Um, I guess, that's a detail that has to be worked out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
A few questions. One, just first, is in your presentation, you mentioned, um, Crescent Halls as an opportunity. Could you discuss in more detail just what, if any, conversations or specific, uh, ideas or plans have been discussed around that, uh, up until this point?
Well, I've just been given, uh, a very high-level issue. Uh, I think, uh, CAT, uh, deviates off the main road to serve that development. And my understanding is that's, uh, an awkward movement for a larger vehicle to do. So the thought would be to have Jaunt, uh, provide that service instead of the main route. Uh, and I'll ask Mr. Sanders to correct me. Um, now, Jaunt already serves Crescent Hall, but it's limited to ADA-eligible riders. Um, if there are people who are not ADA eligible, just, and being a senior citizen does not automatically make you ADA-eligible. Um, so, um, so if we were to serve that, our mission would have to expand a little bit to do that. Um, but, uh, we're already there. But we're already there. If it makes more sense to have us take people somewhere than having them board a bus, then we can look into that. Beyond that, I don't really have any details. I've not had any discussion with Garland Williams or city staff or anybody at the senior center there, so.
Okay. And I appreciate in the presentation, you know, the focus on the future, but I do want to return to the past a little bit. You know, obviously, you weren't there at the time, but this is the first time that John has been before us as a body since the state audit. And obviously, you know, you had a situation where the executive director had spent $11,000 for a hotel ticket, stayed at the Ritz-Carlton, $700 for a single meal. And then, when John, as a body, was approached to provide information about that, deciding receiving over 90% of its funds from the public, it did not willingly present that information. And I know you weren't there at the time, but I could say for myself, and I think a lot of members of the public, a tremendous amount of trust has been lost, given the fact that we provide John with millions of dollars, its majority, vast majority publicly funded. In addition to these issues that you talked about in the presentation about inaccurate data, misuse of urban-rural funds, I am curious to hear in a lot more detail what was wrong structurally that made the board unaware of these problems? What was the situation beyond just the executive director and problems deeper within the staff? And what changes have been made to ensure that, one, this kind of situation cannot occur again, and, two, that there is a greater amount of transparency for the public and us as a public body, which provides you with funding?
Well, I can't speak about the dynamics between the prior executive director and the board. My impression is that there's a high degree of trust. So, and I don't know what information was given or not given, or what was asked but not provided. What I do know from talking to the staff here, that the prior executive director basically hoarded the information, both budgets, statistical information, almost to the point where, when he left, the staff was unable to recreate some of the assumptions. So the number-one thing is not only have transparency with the public, but within John itself. So there are more eyes now on our data, and some more collaborative effort in creating budgets, making sure we're doing things right. And I credit the staff for taking that lead. That's continuing under my tenure here as well. So, so, so I think the staff is fundamentally competent. They're honest, they're dedicated, and they're absolutely horrified that all this happened. A lot of hard-working people felt betrayed. And, and they're horrified by what all happened, but we're determined to put that behind us and move forward. That's all you can do with the situation. And for the board's perspective, we're trying to do a lot more to keep the board engaged. I speak with the board president every week. I give him a 15- to 20-minute update as to what we're doing, minutia stuff as well as big-picture stuff. We have regular meetings with the executive committee of the board, where I review the agenda for the upcoming board meeting, as well as any issues that we think may be on the horizon. The finance committee meets on a more regular basis. I think that committee is more professional. We have the assistant CFO of Albemarle County sitting on it, who has all kinds of financial credentials. So I think overall, we're making information more available, being more upfront. As I mentioned, we discovered problems ourselves with some of the rural, urban stuff that the state hadn't known. We're coming forth with that, not only with the problem, but how to solve it. So I just, I think it just takes work on everybody's part, and the board has eagerly stepped up to improve its oversight role. And so I think we're heading in the right, our direction. As long as we keep the communication lines open in the way we've spoken about, I think that will do a lot to prevent future actions. So that's our, that's our pledge. In terms of some of the transparency issues, technically, John is a private public service corporation. However, we're going to treat ourselves like a public entity. We're following FOIA. We're going to be appoint, training and appointing a FOIA officer for our agency. We just recently hired a new attorney who specializes in local government. And we're going to treat ourselves like the local government. Anytime we have a purchasing issue, we double-check and make sure we're following state, federal guidelines to make sure that we're doing it right. One thing I would like to do to improve our transparency with the public is to make maybe annual reports to the governing bodies of each of the jurisdictions that we serve, not during budget time, but maybe mid-year, when we're not asking for money, to give you all an update as to what we're doing, much as I just did today with you. And we will be, we're also in the process of creating a public engagement plan, where we want to be out front with the public on a more regular basis, letting them know what we're doing. So, so to answer your question simply, we're just going to work harder at being transparent. And we're going to treat ourselves, hold ourselves to the same standards that public agencies hold themselves to, even though we may not be required to do so. We are going to do that because we receive so much public money, and we just need to do that.
I appreciate that answer and perspective. You know, could you just talk in a little bit more specificity in terms of what changes and specifics have been made internally? Is there an additional staff member who has to approve expenditures? Is there a change in how the board is structurally involved with staff? Is there now, you know, a new process for approving expenditures? And then, second, related to that, are there any additional new public documents or meetings or other things to provide an external check that us as a body, a city council, or the public would be able to review?
I'm not sure about the second question, but let me do the first one. Any expense I have as CEO is presented to the board monthly as part of our finance report. The CFO collects that information and reports it to the board. I do not tell her what to report. I don't review it. It goes straight to the board. She has a dotted-line communication to the board, so if she sees anything out of place financially, she's empowered to go to the appropriate people on the board and report that. So I think that's a new feature that did not exist before. We have spread out the reporting requirements among different staff members. The key thing that we do is have a formula or algorithm to deal with the allocation of costs, ridership, and funding and cost among the different jurisdictions. So our chief planning officer handles that. He works hand-in-glove with the CFO that provides that. I check the work, and our deputy CEO also checks it. And we also run that by the finance committee as well. So there's an established procedure to look at that. Our current cost allocation model was reviewed by one of the consultants that is on the bench of DRPT, and they reviewed it. However, we're embarking on a new transit planning project, where I want to see that model improved over what it is today. So I think the biggest thing is, is we have put algorithms and procedures in place to report information and to track information. Multiple people see this, and we think that's a way to do a check and balance, and then we have a communication right back to the board. In terms of public documents, I know we do audits, and I'm not sure if those are provided publicly, but they can be. And they can be sent unsolicited to the different jurisdictions. So we do go and do an audit procedure. I'm not sure if an audit would have caught the extravagant spending, but we can certainly provide that as a, as a, as a check. I will say, through the budgeting process, through the county and the city, numerous questions were asked of us about variances in various line items. I believe we've answered those. And we even had an in-depth workshop with the city and the county about how our fund, funding works and the changes we have made. And the things I showed you today is really a high-level summary of what we discussed with them. So internally, we have more internal checks and balances. We have a direct report to the board that doesn't go through the CEO. We can provide our audit findings if that's desired. So I think those are some of the concrete things that I can think of that we're doing.
Thank you, yeah. And, you know, I would just say, I think John has done really critical work as a critical part of our transportation sector, critical towards our goal of a regional transit authority. And I know you said, you know, the employees and the ridership felt betrayed by what happened. I certainly think myself and council and the community felt similarly. And I know that's not a reflection on you in any way whatsoever. You know, you weren't here when any of that happened. But, so I appreciate the answers and just definitely am going to be watching closely for what public information and actions, you know, can prove that there's been a change so we can have confidence in the millions of dollars that we're investing as a government body are fully going to benefit the ridership in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian?
Excuse me. Yes. Hi, Mr. Reek. Thank you for coming tonight to share with us. Can you, can you say a little more about, this is largely similar to what Counselor Payne was pressing into, but in terms of rebuilding the trust with DRPT and our state partners and I guess federal partners, it sounds like there were things that came to light as a result of the initial things that were flagged. And so I'm just wondering, you know, I see all the work that you're doing and have done in terms of like being honest with DRPT, getting their feedback, making changes. How do you feel, how do you feel like John is doing and where do you think we stand in terms of rebuilding trust, credibility with our statewide partners, or federal partners for that matter?
Well, going back to DRPT, as I mentioned, they gave us the cure letter in March, at the end of March. We wrote them back indicating the things we have done to that point to address the cure letter issues. And I summarized those to you just tonight. They didn't ask us to do that. We did it on our own initiative. And we also went back, they found some urban-rural issues. In our own initiative, we went back and we checked three years' worth of data to see if there were any other issues that maybe they didn't catch. And we found some. So, and we brought those to their attention as well. So I think things like that, where we're trying to clean up our house and be honest about it, and I'll, and I'll tell you, some of the findings don't help John, but we want to get them right. And that's, our motivation is to do the right thing. So I think we're making progress. We invited them to come to here. They've accepted our invitation, and that's why they're going to be here next week. So I believe things of that nature, I hope build trust and accountability. So I, so those are the main things I can think of that we're being proactive about. We're probably doing a better job in following state guidelines on FOIA, for example. We, on the openness meeting requirement, I don't believe we were strictly following open meeting requirements in the sense of how you go about publicizing meetings. You've got, you've got to supply the agenda or notification, I think, three days ahead of time. We're doing that, and we're posting the agenda in publicly prominent areas. And I don't know if we did a great job in any of those things, but we're making efforts now to do it. One of our staff members will be trained to be a FOIA officer, actually, will be trained tomorrow, and will be certified as a FOIA officer. And I'll ask the board to appoint her for that role. So we are taking the, very much to heart, our obligations to be, to act in the highest fiduciary we can as a public agency, even though technically we are not one. We are reviewing our governance documents to make sure they're in sync with what we actually do in practice. And I'll tell you, there are some anomalies there too that we're discovering. And we're, and we're going to figure out, how do we fix that? Do we just amend our current bylaws? And if we do, some of that's going to require us coming back to you for approval. Because the city of Charlottesville is a stakeholder, is a shareholder of John. And for us to make amendments to our articles of incorporation, we'll require the city council, I believe, to approve that. We're also thinking about, are there other options for us? Should we remain a public service corporation? Maybe we should become a public agency in our own right. And if we, if we need to go to the governing bodies to get our articles of incorporation approved, maybe just easier to change us. Because there are some advantages for us to be a public agency. Among those advantages is that it forces us to live to a higher standard. One of the contentions, I recall from reading the paper during the prior administration, was there was some thought we were not, didn't have to follow FOIA. And $50,000 later and a lawsuit later, we discovered we did. And so we're just going to, just be that way. So I'm not sure if I got all your questions, but if I've left anything out, let me know.
Yes, thank you.
And, Mr. Reek, about the only other question I have is, do you have a sense of when, first of all, are there any more shoes about to drop? And second, do you have a sense of when you will be past the shoe-dropping phase and can kind of move on with things? And I don't mean to suggest it should be swept under the rug, but I'm sure this is a distraction from the things that you really thought you would be doing when you came here.
Well, the biggest thing is dealing with this urban-rural funding issue. You know, we've discovered some issues from the past, and we need to discuss that with the state. Most of the people are aware of that issue. I've discussed with the staff of Albemarle County, discussed it with Mr. Sanders, a little bit with Garland Williams. All of my board members know about those issues, and we discussed them preliminarily with the state. So I don't think there are any more shoes to drop. state. So I don't think there are any more shoes to drop. And that, if there is, that that's the one. So, and I'm hoping to have that resolved quickly in the next 30 to 90 days, sooner if not more so. But that's the biggest thing I can think of. Yeah, Jaunt needs to do a lot of things better than what we do. We need to be a more data-driven organization than we are. One of the strengths of Jaunt is its focus on people, both the employees and the riders. I've heard nothing but heartwarming stories about Jaunt and how it works with the public. I hear that from, you know, everyday people, whether it's at the grocery store or what have you. So there's a lot of goodwill out there. And, but at the same time, we need to run ourselves more efficiently. We need to challenge ourselves. Are we running on time? Are we keeping the buses fixed? Do we have enough drivers? Are we paying them well enough? Are we thinking about the future, especially when it comes to alternative fuels? So, so I'm hoping if there, if there's any more shoes to drop, it's that we're doing a better job. And we're trying to work better with our regional partner, with CAT. So I think that's something that, but I think if there's any particular issue, it's probably how we handle urban rural funding. I believe we have a pretty good handle on that. We just need to get to a better place. We need to line up our funding with our expenses in that regard. And I think we can get there, but we just need to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Thank you. That's, that's all I've got. And I think it's been very helpful to have you here and to be able to hear from you a little bit about the, the progress in clearing things up. And again, I'm, I'm hoping that we will soon be at the point where we're, where everything's moving forward. And I know that there are a lot of, a lot of things that we would like to see done in terms of transit for which Jaunt may well play a very important role. And it's important that you have all of your house in order so that, so that we can move that forward. Appreciate you being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We're also going to have a report from Brenda Kelly, and I think Mr. Sanders is going to kick that one off for us also.
So thank you again, Mayor Snook. Councilors and members of the public, this evening's presentation is the culmination of some internal work that was done to establish a single-source repository for all agreements within the city. We have discovered that that hasn't been happening in regards to all of the leases, properties that we own, and various service agreements. So what we're trying to do at this moment is to compile that. But one of the first things that we had to do was to identify an individual who would have that as their job. Her name is Brenda Kelly. You've met her before. She's excited about this new opportunity to help us get our arms around these very, we have a significant number of agreements all over the place. And she has been managing this process, trying to herd the cats, if you want to consider it that. To pull this work together, she's going to share with you tonight the analysis of the first phase of that work on city leases. We imagine it would trigger a number of questions. Prepare to do the work on figuring out answers to those and get those back to you. And then she'll be coming back to you next month with a presentation on city properties. So Brenda?
Good afternoon. I'm gonna share my screen here. And can you see that?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, today we're going to talk about city leases. And this is basically defined as leases or agreement-type leases where either the, where the city's a party. This is either the city owns the property, or the city is a tenant of a property owned by someone else. So we can break this down into further categories. We have ground leases. We have spaces or buildings that the city owns. And we have both property and buildings. The property is owned by the private sector. The city is a tenant. The property is jointly owned. And this is typically the city and the county own the property together. And the space is occupied by another entity. And we have other lease-type agreements that don't fall into the previous categories. So we've linked those or called those other. So what's not included in our discussion today, except for this slide, is outdoor cafe spaces. But we did provide you some summary information on these outdoor spaces for your information. But again, that is not included in our general overview of the city leases. So right now, we have approximately 43 active outdoor cafe spaces. Those can change, that number can change any day, depending on who's moving out and moving in. And further on in the slide, I know it was of interest to all of you to talk about where the revenues go to with these leases. And in this particular case, the rents received from outdoor cafe space goes to the parks and rec maintenance budget. So here's some interesting facts regarding leases and what we're talking about today. So we're just under approximately 150,000 square feet. These numbers may be off a little bit, but this is the best we could put together with the information we have. We did have to do some estimates on ground leases and acreage. So it's approximately 50 acres that we're leasing out. We have approximately 51 leases or lease-type agreements. And one of the oldest active leases we have goes back to 1922. And that's the Lambeth Pump Station that Utilities has a lease agreement with UVA as the property owner. So of course, we want to give you some disclaimers and all the information we're giving you. We're not always comparing apples to apples. There's a whole lot of different type of information. And sometimes it was actually a little difficult to categorize. So in the example of not comparing apples to apples, an example is the city as a tenant in the Water Street parking garage. The city doesn't own the Water Street parking garage, but we lease parking spaces. So in the upcoming slides, when we talk about the rent paid out, where the city is a tenant, we've got that calculated in that figure. But we have not discussed in this presentation, the revenues generated back to the city for those parking spaces. So just wanted to let you know that there are other things like that. But that is just one example of a lot of information and kind of where do we put that. Market values, we worked with the, the property assessor, who is not really comfortable giving market values for the properties. So what we did was we provided as a range. And that's what you'll see in the information that we're providing. And some of the square footage or acreage calculations, we just talked about our best-guest estimates. But we're, we're kind of generalizing with approximate values. So in summary, here's some number of agreements that's in the summaries and what we'll be talking about, where the city is the property owner. The property is owned by a private party and the city is a tenant. The property is jointly owned. Or again, those lease-type agreements that don't fall into those previous categories, we call as other. So let's break this down a little bit. Where the city is the property owner, we have approximately 17 active leases, four expired leases. We'll talk about that a little, little further on. And we have one property where we actually found out we don't even have a lease in place. The approximate total annual rent the city is receiving is about $580,000. Now, this does not include our ground leases or our other type agreements. This is just for the property, the spaces, and the buildings that the city owns. Here's the value we looked at for the annual market value of leases, approximately $3 million to $4 million. And leases that we have in place currently for $0 to $1 a year, there are seven of those. And we'll give you some more information in upcoming slide. So here are those leases for $0 to $1 a year. And we've tried to do a best-guest estimate on the market value of these. So you can see, these are all listed here. The Piedmont Family YMCA and the Cars. Typically, what we did was we took a square footage value by a market value. Well, in the case of the YMCA and the Cars, we don't really have a square footage. It's land and building. And those are kind of different anomalies. So we probably could find some way to determine that. But in this, for this presentation, we did not go that next step. So where do the rent payments go? So we've tried to calculate and work with the budget office and determine where these all go to. So the Lucky Seven in Guadalajara and all the Market Street parking garage retail spaces, those rent funds go into the Parking Enterprise Fund. And the Charlottesville Pavilion and the S&amp;P Global Building, which is also known as the SNL Building, those go into the CETA account. That's the Charlottesville Economic Development Authority. The city manages, the Finance Department manages the books for the CETA. So what's left out, over, out of that 580,000 annual rent is the general fund. Now again, this does not include ground leases or other documents. This is for properties, properties and buildings, spaces, and ground leases. Now, where the property is owned by the private sector and the city is a tenant, we have approximately 18 active leases, two of the, two expired leases on top of the 18. And the approximate total annual rent paid is a little bit over $1.2 million. And four of those are leases for $0 to $1 a year. Now, when we get into talking about the jointly-owned city and county, in the information we're talking about today, there are two properties that fall under this jointly-owned. There are many more in the city. So through our research, we determined that a lot of our jointly-owned properties, we have things like use agreements or operating agreements or other types of documents. And as Mr. Sanders stated, this will be kind of a phased approach to research. So today, we're talking about city leases. Next month, we'll talk about city properties. And then in a future session, we'll talk about city other type of intergovernmental type agreements. And so the libraries, the court system, and other jointly-owned properties will fall into those other types of agreements. It was a little bit harder to pull out that information. And I think there'll need to be a little bit more research. A lot of times because of who's really responsible for the lease, who gets the rent or does the maintenance, those types of thing will be a little bit more involved in doing the research. So we did not include those in the leases. We could not find any specific lease agreements for those types of properties. So right now, we're only talking about two lease-type agreements for jointly-owned properties. Now, these other type of leases or agreements, this other category, these are license-use agreements. This is for utilities that are using land that the city owns. We, the city has an MOU with the Department of Social Services, where the social services pays some, it's not actually a rent payment, but it's similar to a rent payment. And the Jefferson School City Center, that the city is not technically a party, but is involved in some way. So that's where those other category comes from. So through this research, we found that there were some current challenges with our leases. Need for a point person that Mr. Sanders talked about, a need for consistent policies and procedures, and a need for a system to track lease renewals. Also, we need a system to track rent payments and increases in rent. We found that many times, we are not collecting increases on rent that may have escalator clauses on an annual basis. A need for a system to track property inspections, a need for a system to track maintenance requests and track maintenance costs to the city. We've also found out through our research that while the Facilities Department with the city may be in charge of those types of things, some of those costs may be taken out of other departments. So we don't have a good grasp on where that actually is right now. We also should be talking about market values whenever we talk about leases. And that information we just put together recently, we have not had any previous experience on that. So now we'll go into some staff recommendations based on the challenges that we found. First of all, we need to identify a departmental staff person in each department, if there's a department specifically kind of overseeing or in charge of a lease. If not, that will default to me. As Mr. Sanders said, I'm now kind of going to be the coordinator of all this. And I also will be that one point person that will coordinate with each of the department staff people. Lease creation and renewal, we should be developing a standard template. The city attorney's office is involved in this and has also suggested that this would be a good idea. And lease rates, we should be talking again about the market value and what, what are going rates for spaces in the city. Property inspections, a good way to be looking at this is anytime we have an amendment or a lease renewal or a new lease, there should be property inspections done. And this should be, a system should be put in place by city staff. Right now, our facilities management folks are doing some inspections. So they will be working on developing a whole new process to monitor this. And also tenant and city responsibilities, these should be very clearly called out in each lease. And in addition, the responsibility should be commensurate to the rent paid. We do have maybe one or more than one examples where we lease out the property. And we're also responsible for maintenance and janitorial services. And that might not be reflective of the services the city's providing on the rent that is being paid. We need the system to track the lease renewals. We'll talk about that a little bit later on with what's coming up that's expired, currently expired or about to expire. And we also need to track, track the rent payments. So we're looking at city staff, talking to the Finance Department about putting a system in place to track those rent payments. And again, those increases in rent payments. And also reporting, many of the leases that we have in place currently require that the tenants provide you, the city council, an annual update on the services that the organization is providing to the community. And we need to track and make sure that's being done. We also need a system to track the property inspections. And that would be something that the facilities folks would need to put together. Again, with the maintenance requests and the tracking cost, we need to develop some type of standard point of contact and information provided in the leases. So there is one point person that an organization leasing property would get directly to, to put in work orders, or talk about what maintenance is required. And we also should be tracking these regular maintenance and repair costs. So the city knows what's being done to what properties and how much that is costing the city if it's included in a lease agreement. And again, we've, we've previously talked about, we should be, whenever we're talking about leases, whether it's renewals or new leases, we should be talking about current market value of the actual property. So with the leases currently in place, the city owns the properties. Currently, we have no lease in place for one property. We have expired leases and renewals are needed for five properties. And we have renewals needed further on in 2022 for one property. Renewals needed in 2023 for seven properties that are coming up. And a lot of these properties or these spaces or leases coming up are the Market Street Parking Garage and the Office of Economic Development has a really good grasp on that. So they keep up with those leases and keep those very current. And then further on, we have outgoing expiration dates. I also want to let you know that we do have some leases that are month-to-month, or they have just a notice of termination clause in the lease. So they're an ongoing lease with a notice of termination. So they're an ongoing lease with a notice of termination. So those leases where the city is a tenant, we have two leases, current leases in place where a renewal is needed. We have one coming up that is needed in 2022, a renewal. And we have one coming up that's a renewal in 2023. And then I've listed some of these next expiration dates with that information. So what we're recommending with these staff recommendations we just put forward to you is that we're looking to implement these recommendations. We've already put basically a team together that will address all the things we previously discussed. It may take a little while to put some of these measures in place and how to set up new systems for tracking. The first thing we're going to do is assess the expired leases like we just did, provide you a little bit of a lease. And the lease is due for renewal. And then we'll work with the City Attorney's Office to get working on those. They're already in the process of working on some of those. We, and then, as we discussed, we need to assess the compliance of the existing leases. That's again, are they paying their rent? Are they paying the increases due on the rent? Are they complying with their reporting requirements to use the city council? And a little bit further down the line, it's going to take us a little bit longer to work on it. We want to assess the maintenance and repair costs to the city. So we have those values, especially as we look to renew any of the leases. If we're finding we have extensive maintenance repair costs that, for example, the rent payment may not be covering that, we may need to address that in negotiations on the leases. So that's pretty much all the information I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. And I know it was a lot of information. And we kind of went through that. But we just wanted to provide you with a summary.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. And I would like to note, by the way, for the record, that Counselor McGill joined us at about 4:15 today. But I didn't know that. And I apologize to Ms. McGill because I deprived her of her opportunity to ask questions of the jaunt folks. So I'm going to give you first crack at Ms. Kelly. Beg your pardon?
I would have spoken up.
Okay.
It was all good. Everyone asked the things that I would have asked. I, I just, I do want to comment on this presentation, though, because I know this is, I've been asking about some of these things now for a couple of months. And Brenda, I'm just floored by your presentation. Thank you. I know we still have work to do. But what you have put together already really was exactly where I was trying, I was getting lost in trying to figure out what we owned and how we could have paying rent so much more than what we were bringing in for things. And I just think going forward, we're also going to have to sit down and talk as a council what we want to do when we, it's when we're supplementing the rent for a private company. Because when we look at a lot of these rents on a lot of these buildings, they're about half of market rate. Which is fine if we are doing more than just collecting rent. If we are giving small businesses a start. If we are working with the Community Investment Collaborative, maybe. Or with our minority business programs and giving new burgeoning businesses a shot. But when we look at leases that are 20, 10, 20, 30 years old, that's, that's not giving new people a shot. Or are the people who are benefiting from this even living in the city? So I, I mean, part of this, this now gives council a starting point to also think about theoretically, what we want to do with this level of support as well. And I just, I cannot tell you how grateful I am for the work you've put into this.
And let me just add, I know that Counselor McGill has been asking these questions frankly, over and over in recent months. And that's fine. It's the stick-to-it-iveness that we need that has led to getting this very important report from Ms. Kelly. Other, Ms., Counselor McGill, do you have any other comments, questions at this point?
No, I think we do need to now, I mean, I think our next follow-up, too, is we're going to need a presentation from CETA, since they are obviously overseeing a large portion of some of our rentals, especially the for-profit rentals. And understanding how that works and how our relationship with CETA works.
Yeah. Good point. Other counselors?
Yeah, I'd say a couple, I think. I concur with a lot of what Sina said. And what I heard Brenda say over and over again is that we need to standardize this process and, and to, you know, as these leases and agreements come up to say, this is what we would like to see as a city, those opportunities that Sina mentioned. And are there opportunities for the public to use the space for meetings or gatherings or things like that? Opportunities where we can encourage collaborations with different organizations. And, and that is some direction we need to set as council. But we have this valuable resource. We need to make sure that we're getting our money's worth out of it. And some of these nonprofits are small, may not, may not have the opportunity to pay full market costs. But if not, we need to make sure that we're getting the, the best bang for our buck that, that we can. And, and over the coming months, through staff, through Mr. Rogers and, and Sam and Ashley, let, let staff know what our direction, our guidance will be for these agreements. So thank you. This is a lot of, lot of work. I can only imagine what it was like to pull all these things together. So thank you.
I know I've joked a number of times about the Indiana Jones aspect of some of this, having to go into the archaeological digs to find out what, what was done, how long, how many years ago? Ancient documents in the, in the bowels of City Hall, et cetera. So.
Yeah, I want to thank Counselor McGill for pressing on this. I think it's a great example of a question we've had. And it's important, pieces of data we need to get answered. And she really kept pushing. And I appreciate staff pulling this together. And Ms. Kelly, the report you gave, thank you for that. I would love to get a copy of the PowerPoint separately if I could. As I sort of read what you have and understood what you said, it sounds like this will just be sort of the first step as we evolve towards a more complete accounting of, of our leased properties, either where we're leasing or the actual lesor. So yeah, thank you. I appreciate this. And again, I'll look forward to seeing the PowerPoint, the, the presentation, as well as, as we go forward in the months ahead, more detail and backup being filled in. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just echo what others have said. You know, I'm curious how we can develop a process when leases come up for renewal, how we can ahead of time evaluate, you know, as, as Vice Mayor Wade said, you know, is this the use we want in terms of our long-term vision for the city? I don't think we need to be nickel-and-diming every organization if there's a clear benefit to the public and they're a smaller organization that can't pay market rate or paying market rate would affect their ability to offer services. But I certainly think there's a lot of arrangements where there's a lot of questions that council and the community would have about, you know, is Verizon the ideal use we would want for the space, given how valuable our land is? And the final thought I had is just when it comes to the S&amp;P, the leases for the S&amp;P Global Building in the Pavilion, you know, the, the S&amp;P one comes out in about a decade. The Pavilion one comes out in about, comes up in about two decades. And, you know, for us on council with four-year terms, that's kind of like a lifetime away. But given how central and valuable those properties are, I don't think it would be a bad idea for us in the coming years to think long-term about what would our vision for these spaces be? What would be a potentially transformative use or how to involve the community and use these in the most beneficial and best possible way? Because if those leases come up and we haven't done any planning, we may have missed some incredible opportunity to have, you know, a new transformative public space or partnership that does something really vital in our downtown core that helps build community wealth or provide some sort of public space or public service for the community. And so just going through them, those are the ones that really stuck out to me, just because of how large and central they are and the fact that even though 10 years now sounds like a long time, you know, it's going to creep up on us sooner rather than later.
And the only thought that I would offer is not directed towards Ms. Kelly, but rather towards anybody who might be listening who may have one of the, let's say, one of the nonprofits that is a lessee, that is having a favorable rent arrangement. This is not necessarily a prelude to bumping everybody's rent up to market rate. It is simply a recognition that we don't, we, at this point, until this report and this information's gathered, we on council had no idea who we were subsidizing. And we have no idea why we're subsidizing them in some cases. And we may want to make some conscious decisions to continue to subsidize in the form of the rent. Or we may not. But at least we will be doing so on the basis of actual knowledge. And that's an important thing that we've been missing for a long time. And I, I join others in saying, Ms. Kelly, I appreciate your work. I'm sure we will have other questions for you as time goes along and other tasks that will have to be addressed. But thanks, thanks for being with us.
You're welcome.
Counsel, that is basically it for our 4:00 to 5:30 agenda. And since it's about 5:24, it's probably a good time to go ahead and go into the closed session. And unless somebody has something else we need to be talking about right now, we've hit the agenda points. So is there a motion to go into closed session?
I, yes, let me pull up the text, unless you have it. Someone else has the text up.
Here.
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Virginia Code, I hereby move that the City of Charlotte, the City Council, close this open meeting and convene within a closed meeting. Pursuant to Section Code, Section 2.2-3711, Section 8, Subsection 3, for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property within the city or a public purpose, for a public purpose, and the proposed disposition of publicly-held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the city's negotiating and bargaining position strategy. Pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, Section 8, Subsection 1, for discussion or consideration of assignment or appointment of a chief of police.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Counsel will now be in closed session. We will, are we returning to the same link or to a different link? To a different link? Okay.
It's a different one, sorry.
Different, a different Zoom link at 6:30. So anybody who's watching us on Zoom, going to have to find the new link. We're in, in closed session. And this open session is in recess. Thank you.